The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
So we have the City Council in chambers minus Councilman Rosado, who is attending the Youth Commission annual awards and will be joining us shortly. We can tell on the call that we have Commissioner Tebow, Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Mace, Commissioner Jones, and then we have three people that are showing as call-in. Call-in user two, could you please identify yourself?
That's Scott Mace. I had a caller from my phone because my computer doesn't have audio.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Mace. And what about caller user three?
Mike D. John Smith, Mike D. Orlando on the tour.
Okay, it is you Chairman Smith, thank you. And call-in user four, I can't see the number from here, but it's...
It's probably Orlando because the WebEx link is not working.
Okay, so it looks like then we are only missing Commissioner O'Brien from this call. So we do have a quorum. We're also joined by Corporation Council, who are viewing from upstairs. So now that we know who's on the call, we can proceed to the agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting from July 14th. So moved. Motion has been made by Councilman Fortier, and it sounded like seconded by Burns. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the Consent Calendar. We have items 2A through M. Do any members have any of these items that they would like to remove from the Consent Calendar for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to make an additional appropriation of $60,000 within the LoSiP fund for hazardous tree removal at West Cemetery. And I believe we do have a requested amendment, so I will ask Councilwoman Barney to bring that forward.
Yes, the requested amendment is to change the appropriation to $76,000 within the LoSiP fund and to add to West Cemetery Downs and Lewis Street Cemetery as well. So the new motion would be to make an additional appropriation of $76,000 within the LoSiP fund for hazardous tree removal at West Downs and Lewis Street Cemeteries. Okay, the motion has been made to amend Agenda Item Three. Is there a second? Discussion on the motion. Especially with the scrutiny being given to trees in the last week, we have been looking for funds for a year or so for to deal with the city-owned cemeteries, many of which are classified in full or part as ancient cemeteries, which means that by state statute, they do not have perpetual care funds. And so it is at the onus of the city in order to provide maintenance. For the past several years, we have contracted with West Cemetery Association to take care of Lake Lewis and Downs. There are several trees that Councilman Barney and Cemetery Commission identified Monday night that are in serious danger, and they have asked through the Cemetery Commission for this amendment to be made. We have confirmed with the Controller's Office that LoSiP funds are available up to $76,000. And a question to the Controller, do you want the motion to read "up to"? All right, so Councilwoman Barney, if you could just clarify that your amendment is to additional appropriation of up to $76,000.
Okay, the amendment should read "up to $76,000."
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Any discussion or questions from the Board of Finance who are joining us online? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four is to transfer $70,000 from the Capital Projects contingency account for the replacement of the synthetic turf fields. A little bit of a clarification here, it is really for the drainage that is needed to be done previous to the replacement of the synthetic turf fields. And the drainage is specific to Bristol Eastern.
To Birds.
Okay, a motion has been made. Second. Burns.
Sally likes birds.
Is there any conversation or questions based on the presentation at our last meeting? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, may we go back to item three? We did vote on the amendment, but then we didn't vote on...
Thank you, Teresa, the motion. We have to go, I'm trying to rush because the zoning commission has to come in here in the next few minutes, but we missed voting on the full motion. We only voted on the amendment for item three. So now I'd like to ask that the joint meeting consider the amended motion for an additional appropriation up to $76,000 within the LoSiP fund for hazardous tree removal at West Downs and Lewis Cemeteries. So moved. Discussion on the full motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, to transfer $100,000 within the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for Professional Services for the Sessions Building Project. So moved.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next and final item is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Controller Walden.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try and make this quick. As I reported at some of the last meetings, our tax revenue came in very strong this year. We were actually at 100% of budget and 99% collection rate, which is phenomenal. Last year it was 98.6%, so definitely an improvement over the prior year. Our supplemental motor vehicle came in at 1.92 million. Building permit revenue, we ended the year at 139% of the budget, and I think that's a pretty good number right now. I don't believe there are any year-on-entries that need to be made. Conveyance fees was 126.5% of budget, and investment earnings came in at 1.22 million or 131% of budget. And last year, investment earnings were 1.5 million, so you could see we had a little bit of a decline this year. Police private duty, again, there's definitely, compared to the prior year, there definitely is much less than the prior year, but again, there have not been as many projects. I think that Route 6 project last year took up, was very, they were very busy with that. And then recreation fees, as I mentioned last time, we did not take in as much recreation fees because of COVID-19 and a lot of the park programs not being run. Overall, though, I just really wanted to look at overall on the revenues, and right now, our revenues at June 30th were $2.8 million more than budget, so I think we did really well between the investment income, the supplemental motor vehicle, building permit revenue, conveyance fees, I think all of that adds up, and I think that'll put us in a good position when we close everything out. On the expenditure side, we're pretty much complete with closing out the encumbrances. I think your report might be maybe a week behind, but as mentioned last time, we do have significant surpluses in Corporation Council professional fees, a lot in our Public Works Department, primarily because of snow removal, most of that was returned. And then just note that if you're looking at the reports, there is about a $3.9 million available balance, but we will be moving that over to our road improvement fund. So that is something that we received, that municipal grant aid money, that will carry over into that. Just to talk about the Board of Education, they right now are estimating surplus of about $1.6 million. They are still closing everything out. Of that 1.6, we have had discussions that we will use that to fund their cafeteria deficit, which right now is around $450,000. The balance of that, we have talked about them reserving 1% in the 1% fund, as allowed by state statute. So with all of that being said, I do know that we will have a surplus of funds at the end of the year that the city can set aside for our mill rate stabilization reserve fund, which we talked about during the budget process, as well as we need to put a little bit more money into our health insurance reserve fund. So with that, I'll definitely have better numbers as the month goes, as we get through another month, but I think that's good, so that'll put us hopefully in a good position for next year's budget. I did report at the last meeting that we did submit our FEMA package. It was $424,000. Since that time, we have received information from FEMA. We have gone through that with them, actually, I think we talked to them last Friday. Right now, there is approximately $131,000 in costs that they're questioning that they may deem ineligible. We are working with our FEMA rep, trying to get him all of the information that they need. Basically, it's documentation to prove that these costs were COVID-related. How is it an emergency protective measure? The majority of it, it breaks down, it's kind of all over, between sewer and water, some of the overtime and incentive pay there, cafeteria food distribution, guard services, materials, IT, some of this, I just think we need to provide them additional information, but I don't think of the $131,000, they will allow all of it, but I think we can get some of that allowed. That being said, once that process is done, we will submit to the state fund. And fortunately, they extended that date from August 30th to September 30th because there was no way we were going to be able to get our FEMA notification back and be able to get that application in by August 30th. And we weren't the only ones in that position. I think just about, I talked to a lot of colleagues around the state, and a lot of them had not even applied for their FEMA funds yet. And you have to do that first before you can apply to the state, so getting that deadline extended was very significant. And then, now we're starting on our FEMA application for this hurricane. So we spent a lot of time on that today, and of course, over the last week. So does anybody have any questions on anything? Two minutes to spare.
I know. Thank you. Any questions online for Diane? Okay, thank you very much. If there's no further business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, but before we do that, let's just have some direction from our town and city clerk. What happens now? Does everybody have to call back in if they want to follow the council, because we're switching rooms?
We're all signed up in the other room, so they can just stay on the line. It's the same call-in number, so if they stay on, they should be fine.
Okay, so did everybody hear that? If you're joining us for the City Council meeting, you can just stay on the line, although those of us here are going to physically change rooms to make room for the zoning commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'm just going to close up.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Welcome, everyone, to the August City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 12th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the members of the City Council introduce themselves, starting on my far left? My left. Mary Fortier, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. Our opening ceremonies and moment of reflection will be for everyone who is so strongly affected by last week's storm, for those that were medically challenged, the ones that were without power for six days, as well as all of the difficulties that came with the private property damage, and also a moment of appreciation for all of our city workers who took time and spent countless hours on the front lines. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on July 14th and the special City Council meeting on June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barney, seconded by Councilman Hahn. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I wonder if Emily Basham with Connecticut Green Bank is sitting in the zoning meeting.
See, what does she look like?
I don't know. All right, we can come back to that. Why don't we start with announcements? Do any members of the City Council who are here tonight have announcements?
No, Your Honor.
I do have one announcement. In my mailbox I received this week, there's a flyer for a fundraiser for Imagination, and it's Kiss a Big Day on September 24th. And in support of one of our council members, I think it'd only fair to mention that if you make a donation, you can vote for Peter Kelly to kiss a pig on September 24th. I think it would be a huge disappointment to all of us in this room if Peter did not have an opportunity to slip a kiss to Daisy the Pig.
I've already sent in my check.
So I just wanted to put my support to Peter on this endeavor and wish him all the best.
Is wishing him the best, does he win or does he lose?
He wins.
No other announcements? Okay, my big announcement is that at 5:00 PM on today, we are down to zero outages in the city. Although I did hear a Don Dwyer call, so I'm hoping that that wasn't a service. Okay, moving on to the Consent Calendar, we have items A through D. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull off?
Your Honor, may I take item C off the Consent Calendar?
Yes. So the vote tonight will be on looking for a motion to approve Consent Calendar items A, B, and D.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For Consent Calendar 5C to award contract 2C21003, Community Connectivity Ramp and Sidewalk Improvements to Tobacco and Sun Builders, Inc., for $294,715 in authorization for the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Your Honor, I'm going to excuse myself, as I have a conflict of interest due to my professional job.
Okay, so Councilman Proleski will be excusing himself from 5C due to conflict. Are there any other concerns or questions regarding 5C? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Clift, can you retrieve Councilman Proleski?
Sure.
Moving on to reports and committee reports. Item 6A is a report from the Real Estate Committee to enter into a lease to rent with Damato Associates LLC for a portion of 75 Batista Road, Assessors Map 3, Lot 31, at $275 a month for an initial lease period of 10 years. Councilman Hahn.
Yes, I have a motion, Your Honor. I hereby move that the mayor, acting mayor, enter into a lease to rent to Damato Associates LLC, a portion of the city-owned property identified as 75 Batista Road, Assessors Map 3, Lot 31, at a rental amount of $275 per month. Said initial lease to be for a period of 10 years, with five five-year renewals with a 10% increase in rent per each renewal. The lease shall also contain a one-year termination notice. The mayor or acting mayor shall also negotiate any additional terms deemed to be in the best interest of the city. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is also from the Real Estate Committee to rescind the lease entered into with Bristol Hospital, Inc., for 51 High Street for the Bristol Parent and Child Center.
Yes, Your Honor, this came about because the parent and child center will be, programs will be folded into the youth and community services. So I have a motion here. I hereby move that the acting or, that the mayor or acting mayor rescind the lease recently entered into with Bristol Hospital, Inc., for the city-owned property known as 51 High Street. Said property was to be utilized for the benefit of the Bristol Parent and Child Center. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion. We are going to be hearing more about this under new business, but this is the legal piece of we no longer need to have a lease with Bristol Hospital. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other reports and committee reports that council members would like to bring forward at this time?
Your Honor, may I update the committee council on Memorial Boulevard School?
Yes, we'll bring Memorial Boulevard School as the next committee report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The planning and design stages for the Boulevard construction project have been completed, and right now, the activity is going full guns in the building, for both hazmat removal and for the demolition within the building. Yesterday, purchasing manager Russo hosted pre-bids for the next phase of the project, which includes site work, basingry, landscaping, roofing, windows, drywall plumbing, and some of the mechanicals, and over 100 contractors showed interest in working on the project. We're very happy with the response, Your Honor.
That's great.
It is great, thank you. The Building Committee continues the meeting monthly, and details are available both on the City and the Board of Education websites, and remote access is available to anyone who would like to join the meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Are there any questions of Councilman Proleski concerning Memorial Boulevard? Okay, well, he is not a member of carrying an assessments, but this would be a good segue for a member of that committee to ask for that committee report to be brought onto the table.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to bring the hearing assessment recommendation onto the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At a meeting that was held prior to our City Council meeting, the Hearing and Assessment Committee held a public hearing on the discontinuance of Willis Street in order to complete the site plan needed for Memorial Boulevard School. Is there a motion to come before the City Council?
I make a motion that, based on the public hearing and the recommendation from the Hearing and Assessment Committee, that the city proceeds with the discontinuance of Willis Street north of South Street, and that the land, in accordance with the agreements made with the Barnes Group, and that the land revert to the city of Bristol.
Okay, the motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Councilman Rosado.
Why are you?
I hope the award ceremony was...
Was great.
Good? Okay. We're going to catch up right now. Do you have any announcements or committee reports?
No.
Okay. Does anybody else have a committee report from City Council?
Your Honor, if I could, just a quick update for the City Arts and Culture Commission. As many people have noticed, the mural has gone up on Main Street next to Webster Bank, and it looks beautiful, so I encourage anybody to go by and see what has resulted. Again, the Roberts Foundation and Chris Iogas, their very generous support of this project, paid for the far majority of it. However, there are some costs that need to be defrayed and additional, so we are accepting donations for the cost of the mural going forward as we finish up. And also, there will be a dedication for the mural that will be happening in September, and so look forward to more announcements in that regard. Thank you.
Do you want to flash a visual?
I gave the visual to the Nutmeg folks, and they're going to include it in there.
Oh, that'd be great, because I think people who might not have had an opportunity to come to Main Street will enjoy looking at that.
Yes.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the total cost of the mural?
It's $14,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any other committee reports?
I have one item, Your Honor, which is not exactly a committee report, but I wanted to bring onto the agenda the new hire report...
Yes.
...that had not been included in the original agenda.
So a motion has been made to bring the new hire report via Salary Committee onto the table. Is there a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to bring the new hire report for July 1st to July 31st onto the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, a motion to approve the new hire report as presented.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief Flynn, that wasn't a call about power outages, was it?
Not power outages, but wires in the tree down on West Street.
That came in a while ago.
Yeah, they said there's a crew on the scene, but they found wires in the tree, so...
Lord, okay. Is it ruining my zero people with power outages right now?
The crew I just got on the scene, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
You should have knocked on the door.
Okay, moving on.
Hopefully, it's just a string wire that was left that someone forgot to pick up.
So is there any unfinished business to come before the City Council? Okay, hearing none, is there any new business to come before the City Council, starting first with council members? Councilman Hahn?
No, Your Honor.
Kelly.
Well, yes, Your Honor, I would just like to thank you for all your hard work through this power outage. I know the hours you put in and your knowledge of EverSource and your relationship with the EverSource employees really facilitated efficient restoration of power, so, you know, thank you for all your hard work with that.
Well, I'd like to actually just thank everybody for being so understanding of doing some of the other things that needed to be done last week while we concentrated on this storm piece. And I know that Councilman Proleski was on vacation, but he was checking in regularly. And Mary, Councilwoman Fortier, was very helpful in getting things done that I couldn't get to in the office. I know that several of you were out in your neighborhoods, checking in with the residents, which I think was very valuable. So we really do need to be a reflection of compassionate government, and when something like that happens, even though it's not happening to us personally, it's important to understand how devastating it is to the people that we represent. And I know that it stretched from Newell Avenue in District 2 that Councilwoman Kelly and Councilwoman Proleski and I visited last night, that is a community up there that has wells and septic. So without power, they're not running any of that unless they have generators. So that, I think they much appreciated the visit. Councilman Rosado and I were out on Harper Court for the entire day on Sunday, watching a very surgical operation to separate trees and wires on that street. And Councilwoman Kelly at that time was very busy cleaning out the Carson's refrigerator on Norwood Road. And Councilwoman Barney was over on Arlene, and Councilman Hahn was on Ferraro, and I think it was something that we needed to do, because this was not anything that anybody expected. So I appreciate all of you being such great backup as well in terms of, you know, you come in every day expecting it to be this, and yet it often goes awry, and you have to reconfigure what happens. And we have great staff. I can't really say enough about the work of the Public Works Department. They were augmented by Water, Sew, and Parks, who abandoned what they were doing on Tuesday and joined forces to open up streets and identify blocked roads. The fire department had, what was it, chief, over 130 calls?
138.
138 calls in one night, and three of them were structured fires. And the police were busy blocking streets and guarding wires. They held over a lot of officers from the first shift, and really, it just was an incredible effort in terms of coordination. And when the 911 system and the phone system went down at the police department, a lot of things had to be reworked. So probably not visible...
So probably not visible to the naked eye of the residents going through the storm, but it was really a great effort and collaboration. And I think when you've spent time building interdepartmental relationships, the result is, is that it can very seamlessly come together, because people aren't meeting each other for the first time. So we used the tow light from the water department to keep working past dark so that things could happen. Equipment was exchanged, and we are doing a FEMA application. So a lot of this will hopefully be recouped, but regardless of whether it is or it isn't, you know, it's an indication of what public service is and what people come to expect from that. And I think our response was very good. We were able to quickly build relationships with EverSource Frontier and then Comcast toward the weekend, and I think that that definitely worked as well. Bristol was one of the hardest-hit communities, both with power outages as well as how many neighborhoods it affected. I definitely believe there was some level of a micro storm that touched down at some point, although I don't know that we have anything for sure on that. But I think it was very indicative of why Bristol was chosen as a site visit on Monday by the governor and the lieutenant governor, because we clearly forged ahead and, and got things going. So I think it was a good day for Bristol on Monday as well. So again, thanks to all of you for, for being very proactive in your council districts and being out there. It was very helpful to me, as well as to others, to see you out there and be able to facilitate that information. And that's not to say that there's not areas that we can improve upon. There's definitely things that happened that we recognized at the time, and when we had our storm debrief meeting this morning, which Councilwoman Fortier attended as well, we have a checklist of things that we have to do better. So we're gonna make sure that that happens. But again, it was very good to know that all of those internal processes that need to be improved upon never reached critical stage with anybody looking for services from us, whether fire, police, public works, or emergency management. And I do wanna just end with a big shout out for Harley Graham, who was really just a superstar this past week with everything that was happening, with his relationship with the regional web EOC, and, and really kind of staying on top of things. We had a multi-pronged approach with EverSource. If I wasn't calling them, Harley was calling them, Public Works established relationships, and then obviously, police and fire have relationships as well. So it all really parlayed into a good response for Bristol. Again, I'm not gonna be one to talk about how many days that it took to be restored, but we are restored, and those policy issues are now in the hands of PIRA, which we will be following. And I believe that CCM, who represents us at the Capitol, has filed for intervenor status with the PIRA hearing. So hopefully, we will see some additional support in future storms, including Tropical Depression 11, which is moving up the coast as we speak. Can't even think about that right now. Okay. Any other unfinished business? Okay, for a new business, the Parent and Child Center transition, I just wanna update the City Council. We'd originally envisioned having two tenants at 51 High Street in conjunction with Youth and Community Services. And that was gonna be the Women and Children WIC office, and then it was gonna be Parent and Child Center. We have since had discussions with Kurt Barwess, the president of Bristol Hospital, and discovered that in the hospital's efforts to keep the Parent and Child Center going after the loss of two significant grants, that they have exhausted their funds, that there is just a very small reserve of money that is left to power those very critical programs that service birth to school-aged children and their families. So we have taken those remaining funds, and we have taken three of their staff people, and we are proposing that we bring them on, on a temporary basis, to provide those services as well as create some strategies for identifying future funding. So what we're looking to do, and this is informational, is that we are looking for a referral to go to the Board of Finance for their August meeting. And what we would like to do is ask for $20,000 to be appropriated to the Youth and Community Services part-time wages account. And this temporary employment will be done through Human Resources for three key employees that we're bringing over from Parent and Child Center. One will be identifying funds and writing grants. The other two will continue to administer the programs of the Parent and Child Center to their, to their clients. At the same time, we're going to be meshing the work of that agency with the work of Youth and Community Services. So there may be some cross-promotion, there may be some audience spillover, and there could definitely be a sharing of staff resources. The caring closet, which has been a staple of the Parent and Child Center, has moved to Youth and Community Services. We are servicing a lot of their clients through counseling, through group programs, and I think it's gonna be a good fit. And I think it is a level of services that the city would miss if it wasn't there. I think it's very preventative in nature. Through the collaboration, Marco Palmary, who's the director of the Bristol Burlington Health District, has also identified that he believes that there are sources of funding through his agency, specifically for maternal health, that would also be able to be brought over to Youth and Community Services in order to fund these programs. So what we are asking the council to bless right now, and we will go to the Board of Finance, is we would like to keep these three employees on for limited hours between now and December 31st to see if we can identify other funding sources in order to make these programs whole. One employee will be working one day a week, and the purpose of that will be researching and assisting grants and to support those programs, as well as providing some weekly clinical supervision to the other two employees. The other two employees are parent educators actually doing the actual programs. One will be working 25 hours a week, and the other one will be working 15 hours a week. And their rate of pay is calculated to be about $20,000 between now and December 31st. There is some funds that we can put toward this. There is a small grant left from the United Way, and there is a small grant from the Main Street Community Foundation. That could be put toward that amount, which could make it less than $20,000. And Kurt Barwess and I are actually co-authoring a letter to the traditional donor list of the Parent and Child Center to also raise additional funds. So the $20,000 is the absolute most up to, is probably what the motion will read to go to the Board of Finance, but these three employees will have their relationships with Bristol Hospital end on Friday. On the 17th of August, they will become temporary employees of the city. Those are non-benefited positions, and we will then try this out for three months to see if it's something that fits and that there's substance to folding them into Youth and Community Services on December 30th. If it's something to which funds were not made available, they choose to seek employment elsewhere, et cetera, we will again revisit this and adjust the Parks, Recreation, Youth and Community Services budget accordingly. Right now, Youth and Community Services can absorb the beginning part of this. Because of their beginning of the fiscal year, their wages are intact for, for part-time employees. So that's where we stand right now. Does anybody have any concerns or questions about charting this path with the formerly Parent and Child Center of the hospital?
Your Honor, you know, Youth Services definitely has its, had its challenges these past couple years, and they've overcome a lot of obstacles and streamlined a lot of functions. It's just apparent that, you know, once they moved in, they lost their funding, and this is not a need, this is a necessity to our community. So I applaud you guys for stepping forward and trying to make something happen for these services that are greatly needed in our community. So this is a power, this could be a power move for, for that Youth Services. Seems like we're going from infants to youth.
All the way up.
All the way up the ladder, so it's amazing to see those works in progress and what it's gonna bring to our community, so.
Thank you.
So if the council was so inclined, the motion would be to make a referral to the Board of Finance for the approval and appropriation of $20,000 to the Youth and Community Services part-time wages account.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Clarifying that it's up to $20,000.
Up to $20,000, yes. Any additional comments or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other new business to come before the City Council?
Your Honor, may I bring something up on behalf of the Economic and Community Development?
Yes.
At our joint meeting earlier tonight, we approved funding for professional service fees for the project we have on Riverside Avenue for the sessions building. What we, I'd like to ask the council to consider is a motion to authorize a contract with our partnering group, the New Colony Development Corporation, for the, for professional services on the building.
Okay.
Do we need to add that, Your Honor, or can I just say the motion?
Under your new business, I think you can just introduce the topic, right?
You can introduce it, but, but you still want it to bring it on the table, because it's not a new agenda.
Okay, so you've introduced the topic, and now we'll entertain a motion to bring it onto the table for discussion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have a motion prepared for New Colony Development?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. I move that the agreement between the City of Bristol and New Colony Development Corporation be approved subject to the review and approved by Corporation Council, and that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for new business? All right, hearing none, we will move on to item nine, resignations.
There was a resignation here.
Okay, moving on to item 10. We have a few appointments. The first one is, we'll take them en masse. There are three reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They are Alfred Radke III, Jeffrey Twombly, and David Pesavich, all for three-year terms to July of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is to reappoint Jeffrey Hayden as an alternate member for a five-year term to the Planning Commission from now through July of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to reappoint Shannon Mulls for a three-year term to the Bristol Burlington Health District through July 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to reappoint Edward D'Amato Jr. for a five-year term to the Building Code Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, this term runs until August of 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then lastly, we had some WebEx issues and attendance issues with our diversity council during COVID, and I'm looking to reappoint both William Stortz and Mohamed Aziz, who are Section 2-9 resignations. There are no terms associated with diversity council, so I'd like to bring those two names forward to reappoint them to the panel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd also like to appoint Alicia Washington to replace Rochelle Denise Miller to the Diversity Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last appointment for tonight is to appoint Kelly Browning to replace Georgiana Roy, also on the Diversity Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
May I just ask, Your Honor, why does that council not have an expiration for their terms? Is that maybe for a visit?
It's like a tax test.
It's a council task force.
Okay, so.
Very fluid.
It's based on the mayor, like, maintaining the task force?
So if you're a commission within ordinance, for example, you're assigned a three-year term or five-year term by state law, Planning Commission, that kind of thing, so it varies on...
And often, the diversity task force would grow into something else, and that it would be...
Well, that raises another point that I think is something that we should look at, maybe changing up a little bit to make it a permanent fixture.
I, I think you're right, but I think at this point, we need to, we're still grappling with
Yes.
what the Diversity Council's role is gonna be, and I think it's changed drastically in the last three months.
Exactly.
So I'd like to, to repopulate it with some additional voices and see if we can continue to evaluate, or best, they can be poised to, to make a difference with policy.
Sounds good. Councilman Rosado, do you have anything to add? I know you've been doing a lot of these meetings as well, trying to identify additional voices.
I, I think we've done a, a good job with that. We've been meeting with, you know, several people over the past couple months, and it's, we're, we're trying to just restructure and, and resituate a lot of the policies and basically procedures that we currently have now into more of a formal, formal, uh...
Routine.
Routine, that focus, that you would say, so.
Yeah.
And we see, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, but we, we still have to get there. We're making ways, so.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I know your support about that mission there, and, you know, we don't, we don't know what happens with government, you know.
I think some of...
You could change out leadership, so it's something that I think is something...
Some, some of the issues that we're still dealing with, dealing with, though, with that committee is, is getting the community involved. When we had the movement going on, everyone seemed to be involved, we had the community engagement, but, you know, we didn't get much of a, much feedback from the letters that were populated from all the emails that we had, so we still struggle with that piece. But I think it's looking pretty good on the structure that we're putting in place.
Excuse me, Councilman Rosado, can I ask you a question? Is the Diversity Council becoming more diverse?
Yes, from all angles as well, so that's one of the things that we looked at. And we're, you know, as we look at everything, you are getting more interest from a diverse population, not necessarily the people of color.
Younger people, too.
Younger people is, is really, is really the top of the, the structure, the movement that we're looking at, as well as, you know, the religion and, and from all demographics, so that's what I'm, I'm good to see.
I, I tried to recruit a young lady recently for Diversity Council. I don't know if I was, you know, stepping outside of my lane to do that, but, I mean, she hasn't gotten back to me, but I think she would be a good addition in the event she showed an interest.
I, I think what's gonna happen with the Diversity Council, it's just not diversity itself. It stems from our community as a whole as well, so once, once we, some of the structure points, I don't want to put out too much, but is becoming involved with, like, arts and culture, our police commission, letting them know that there are committees and commissions that they can sit on and allow them, you know, that, that option.
Because it's actually all interrelated.
Absolutely, so when we had the community conversation, and we threw in the education, and we threw in the community portion, I was really surprised to see a lot of people engaging in those sections of that conversation, and that sparked an interest as well across the board from a lot of people.
Yes, great. Thank you. Okay. And then lastly, the School Readiness Council takes the summer off, but they are due to be reappointed and start the new school year. Their first meeting will be in September, so tonight I'd like to put forward the slate of names that will be serving on the School Readiness Council starting this month. They are Azra Redzik, representing the Board of Education, and Donna Osseth from the United Way. They both serve as the co-chairs. Donna Cozer from the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance. Karen Lombardi from WIC. Alyssa McPhee from the Wheeler Clinic. Peter Kelly as our council liaison. Brenda Moore from the Bristol Housing Authority. Valerie Pelletier from Head Start. Valerie Toner from the Children's Library. Kristin Peck, representing the Board of Education and Special Education Division. Catherine Plord, representing the Bristol Burlington Health District. Jennifer St. John, who is a parent representative. Joyce Voizin, Tunxess Community College Early Childhood Program. Pam Testa, who is a community school readiness program representative. Dr. Susan Lee, a pediatrician. Maureen Eaton, a retired librarian. And Cecile Gurey, the Venti McKinney representative for, she's our homeless coordinator through the Board of Education. Eight of these slots are required to be represented and spelled out in legislation, and the others round out...
and the others round out the board. So is there a motion to take them together as one motion for the 2020-2021 school readiness?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I will turn the agenda over to Therese for the last three agenda items.
Resolution regarding grant application to the Neglected Cemetery Account Grant Program for $2,000 to support ongoing reclamation activities by the Bristol Cemetery Commission. And there is a resolutionary. Do you want to have a computer? There you go.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Hereby resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to the Neglected Cemetery Account Grant Program for $2,000 to support the ongoing reclamation activities by the Bristol Cemetery Commission and its volunteers is hereby approved and that the chief elected officer, official, Mayor Ellen Zaposasu, is authorized to apply for and accept on behalf of the City of Bristol a grant from the Neglected Cemetery Account. And that said, official is authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant should the town be selected for a grant award. Be it further resolved that this matter be reserved, referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Okay, the resolution has been read, and there is a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, starting on my left.
Yes.
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 Okay. And just as a note for Therese, the motion is approved, and our grant writer is awaiting a set of minutes because we cannot submit until we have the meeting minutes from tonight. And this is a time-sensitive issue. It is almost the equivalent of a first-come, first-served grant. Okay, moving on to agenda item 12.
To authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a letter of intent with R. Pelton Builders Incorporated doing business as Echo Smart Home Services for sale of Lot 6 in the southeast Bristol Business Park to construct corporate headquarters. And there is a motion.
It just adds the size of the building.
Do you have them? Were you going to, who have? Okay, let's do the motions so we can have.
The ban bottom here.
Okay.
Then we'll have discussion.
The whole thing again.
Are you? Where's my glasses?
They're on your head.
The lack of air in this room.
You guys have this? Motion is to allow Mayor Ellen Zaposasu, or Acting Mayor, to execute a letter of intent with R. Pelton Builders, Inc., BBA Echo Smart Home Services, or its assign for the sale of Lot Number 6 in the southeast Bristol Business Park for purposes of construction, constructing an approximately 12,000-square-foot corporate headquarters for Echo Smart subject to the approval of Corporation Council.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. So we have two items to end our agenda, and they are two letters of intent to purchase lots in the southeast Bristol Business Park. So this is big news, but as our economic development director likes to remind me, it's not over until it's over. So we are taking a very low-key approach in accepting these letters of intent with the great hope that they both will follow through, and we will have sold two additional lots in this industrial park. But I do, as part of the discussion, I was hoping that Mr. Malley could just give us the 30-second overview of Echo Smart for those of you that were unable to join us at the BDA meeting. And we do have very preliminary plans that I can.
Yeah, you have extras, too. Passes on, sir.
Sure, thank you, sir.
So Mayor, and Council, Echo Smart is a, as a instance that, actually, this particular deal came together fairly recently. Echo Smart has been business for well over 15 years as an energy efficiency and solar contractor in the state of Connecticut. They are located in another community, but they've been looking around, and they're tired of leasing space. They want a billable building that suits their needs that they can own, right? So that's often the case when we're working on these types of projects. Businesses in a building that doesn't work for them anyway, and they're often leasing. So when out there, honestly, they actually called the office when I was on vacation. Christine Cooper in the office did a great job of just starting the conversation when I got back, went out to their location. And they like what they see in the park. They want to move very quickly. They're working. I remember I met with them on a Thursday, provided them with a list of civil engineers to work with just to get an idea of what could be a possibility on Lot Number 6. And they had a drawing back to me over the weekend, Monday after the weekend. So they're moving very quickly. They're a growing company. They're about 29 employees. About 15 are folks, specialists that go out into Connecticut and do energy audits and solar installs. The other half of their workforce is in the office selling. They have a CFO. They have, obviously, the ownership. So it's sort of a 50-50 split between office space and warehouse space for their equipment that they install themselves. So Lot 6 makes a lot of sense for this type of business. They like the frontage, and you'll see the design there could be really unique on the corner. So this is the first step. This company wants to move very quickly to get to step two and three and four. But again, to the mayor's point, this allows us to get through the diligence period, to work very closely with them on their design, to bring in our planner, to bring in our public works director and our engineers so we can cut a ribbon next year.
Hopefully, actually be able to shake hands and stuff. Someone if you got here.
Up to the elbows.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about Echo Smart? Or any questions of Justin? So again, this is the starting phase, just the letter of intent. No, we have a motion and we have a second. And there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now the second lot for sale.
To authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a letter of intent with BHF Logistics, Inc. for sale of Lot 2 in the southeast Bristol Business Park to construct corporate headquarters and traffic terminal.
Okay, so this is for Lot 2. Councilwoman Proleski, do you have that motion?
I do, thank you.
Do you have your glasses on?
Peter Pedward. Throw it over there.
I recognize that, yes, thank you.
A motion to allow Mayor Ellen Zaposasu, or Acting Mayor, to execute a letter of intent with BHF Logistics, Inc. or its assign for the sale of Lot Number 2 in the southeast Bristol Business Park for purposes of constructing an approximately 9,000-square-foot corporate headquarters, trucking terminal facility subject to the approval of our Corporation Council.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. And again, I'll ask Mr. Malley to just give a brief overview of BHF Logistics. They, too, are extremely enthusiastic.
So we've been working with BHF a little longer than Echo Smart. But again, we have a company that has been around for quite some time and that has been, has sort of made do in spaces that were not ideal for the business. They're growing, and they're also leasing. So again, this is a company that made the decision they want to own. They want to build something that suits them. So that's our target market, kind of, for the business part. So actually, Mayor and I met with the ownership early on. We invited the owner of BHF Logistics to take a tour of the AMCO facility. So that's one of our tactics always is to show those interested in building new what's possible, right? So we have such a great relationship with AMCO and all of our owners in that part. They, AMCO, we basically have a key, AMCO opens the doors whenever we have folks to bring in, and it's pretty impressive. AMCO's facility is impressive, and it gets folks thinking and the gears turning. So we then took a walk across the street to Lot Number 2. This particular firm, obviously, there's a trucking component. And from a use perspective, the Pods facility, they would be right next door to Pods. They actually work for Pods. You know, it's one of their clients. So it makes a ton of sense to look at Lot Number 2. And they're at the same point as Echo Smart, right? They're beginning to work with their contractor, design professionals. We have a preliminary site plan out there somewhere. And we'll move forward with BHF the same way we do with Echo Smart.
Your Honor, may I add something?
Yes.
As part of the Economic Community Development Committee, both of these owners showed up for the last meeting, and they're enthusiastic. They're A number one, top-shelf people. And they're existing, they're not, these are not startups. One of these companies, I think Echo Smart has been around for almost 40 years.
Well, yeah. Echo Smart started out as a contracting business, and they saw the light early on and went to solar very early. So they've been doing solar for probably 20 years, but they've been around for quite some time.
But they're enthusiastic. I think they're going to be great corporate citizens for us. And I know Mr. Malley has a plan to usher them through the process here in town. So I think we're fortunate to have them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I just ask, how many lots remain after these two sell?
So after these two sell, we have about, we have five. Two of them may merge. Yeah, you could look at it as we have at least two because we've been merging lots. So we have at least two lots, you know, based on what could be, or we can have up to five.
Okay, cool.
These tend to go in patterns. So these two projects alone have sparked interest. So one of these companies has friends in the industry. And I got a, I received a call from one of, they're already singing our praises to another company. So hopefully, we can build on the momentum.
I hope so, and I'll knock that one.
Just, and I have a question. I'd just like to thank you. I mean, you're doing great work, and everything seems to be coming together. And it seems like it's a jigsaw puzzle, and everything is fitting. So thank you for your efforts and your hard work.
You're welcome.
Good pleasure.
All right. Did we, we didn't put on that yet, did we? Okay, so is there any further conversation about the potential sale of Lot 2 in the southeast Bristol Business Park to BHF Logistics? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will report back to the council regarding how those negotiations go in order to execute those letters. One of them actually came to the ECD meeting last week and had his check already. He's very anxious to put his deposit down. So I feel really good about these two companies and that we are going to be able to see this through to fruition. Is there any other business proper to come before the set meeting tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Just no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.